This conference will now be recorded.
Yeah, let's try this again.
Okay, the first thing that I have is under our D C speedies permit at the wastewater plant, there's a whole bunch of rules that are coming out that we weren't sure if we're going to affect us. Well, they went through our speedies permit and they've changed a bunch of things and they want to have a, it's going to be a Webex meeting, it's on Tuesday, March 23rd, 9:00 a.m., 9:00 to 10:00. And they want to go over the revisions they want to change. And this is all wastewater plants across the state. It's going to be substantially more expensive. There's going to be a lot of sampling we have to do that's coming new for this year. Couple of A samples are like $2,500 apiece. You got to do them quarterly.
Did you say water or sewer?
Sewer. This is, what happened was is there's all these rules that they were trying to make everybody follow and they told us it wasn't going to affect us right away. Obviously, it is going to affect us. There's a lot of towns and villages that have been fighting this for a while now because brand-new plants, they weren't even finished yet. When the D C approved their applications and they built these plants, then this revision came. So, brand-new plants are having to upgrade. So, there's going to be some upgrades we're going to have to do to the plant. And there's going to be a whole bunch of sampling. A lot of it has to do with phosphorus and a bunch of this other stuff in these other places that, I guess they like to attack places like us up here first. So, yeah, well, it could be more. I don't know. It's going to be a whole bunch of stuff. But they want to explain what they've highlighted in our speedies permit, what they want us to change, before they'll approve our new speedies permit. And this meeting would be on the 23rd, like I said, at 9:00 a.m. At the meet, maybe we could have it here. We could have, I don't know if that meeting works if it's the same as.
Same thing.
Go to meeting. So, if we can log in here, I'll make sure that the lady from D C gets it to Anita so she can log us in so that maybe a few people can sit in and listen to it with her. And I'm going to also have Stuart here, probably one of the other operators because Stuart Stuart's really nervous about this. It's going to be a lot harder to use a lot of these standards that we have under the speedies permit. So, yeah, that was the first thing. Main Street project update. We've revised that driveway for that one individual. We widened it, done sweeps on the end. That's about all we can do. He ends up with about roughly on the ends of the sweeps, 22 feet down to a 12-foot drive. The driveway is only like 10-foot wide now. So, that's about all we're going to be able to do. And I'm just going to speak with him about it. If he doesn't like it, he threatens to go to the state. State's already approved it, so I'd say we let him.
Is that up to negotiation?
No. I'm going to say this is what we can do because the state did want us to pay for some of the driveways with radiuses, so it's not a big deal. So, we did that. But if he doesn't like the upgrades, which he wanted 26-foot wide, he wants the crosswalk. If he doesn't like it, then he can go and argue over the state and they're not going to, they won't be. The other update I have up there is the granite. Have you spoke with her at all?
Not since I talked.
Okay, but so she talked with us again. Ivan spoke with her. She feels she has three years to come up with the granite. And that's not the case. It's, she's not the one. Tricky has three years to finish the project. It's not up to her to have three years to do the granite. She said that if she puts people on, the price is going to go up. So, they, they talked with the granite company out of Mass that we went to. And they told us, would you consider that? Remember the granite we wanted that we couldn't have because it didn't meet the standards? They've retested all that granite and the standards are, there's a range that it's in. Most of them are right in the range. Tricky wants to know if we wanted to independently.
That white stuff?
Yes.
That white stuff? That was nice to look.
The comment, Silver Comment or whatever it was called. It was the one we chose and then they said, because it was brand-new granite. So, it did meet all the standards. There was a, they were, they were almost right there, but there was a couple of them that they didn't meet. Well, they did further testing out of, more in the quarry when they got deeper. And it's very minimal. I mean, they're like right on the standard. Someone, like if you test like 50 pieces, like five or six of them would be just under the standard. The rest would be over the standard. So, they, and if you look at these standards, it looks like it's more where they're having the problem with like fracture tests. It's where there's a vein. So, you put a piece with a big vein through it and you put a fracture test on it and cracks on the vein. They said they could cut the grain and at a different angle. Does away with that? You know, I mean, instead of cutting it with the grain, cut it against the grain.
Do you remember the cost? How does it compare? I can't remember now.
I think it was, I think it was less expensive. It was like $19.90 or something, the square foot.
Could you tell that to people in Austin, but?
Well, she, she doesn't think she can meet production. That's the main thing now. She doesn't believe, that's why they're pushing for the full three years for their own part. And she doesn't think she can cut the granite. They're such a small operation. I think what she wanted was like a year in advance notice so she could start cutting them.
She told me that.
But it's just not going to. But we're still working with her. But if we wanted to go back to that granite, Tricky has sent people to go get samples in Massachusetts and they're bringing them to an independent lab here. And then they said if they test, will you guys consider it? Because they don't want to be held up by granite.
Will we sell everyone upstairs?
Yeah, we, I, like, remember they, they sent me that pallet of it so we could do a mockup. That's sitting in the vault.
Then we didn't use it because.
Then we did, yes. So, I have samples of it, but we need to. They wanted us to, they wanted them to cut brand-new granite for us. Get us granite pieces so we could test it. And they wanted to know, would we consider going back to that granite if it passes or if it's right close to passing?
It's our first choice, yeah. So, if it takes a month or six weeks to test it and get all that?
Three days. The testing company told them that if you get it to us, we'll have results in three days.
And it would bring the cost down and maybe it would allow smaller pieces of it where we are going to put bricks and bring it up to the building.
So, at least we can look into it. So, that's, I just need to let them know whether we want them to get it tested and whether we would consider.
Yeah, because we all like that the best.
Okay.
Yeah, that's great. Where were they at again?
Massachusetts. It's where you live.
They're stuck here in Georgia.
It comes out of Georgia, yes. The Silver Comment.
What was it? Down there, Green Bay Olympics, where they all, all the bicycle races outside of it. I can believe you got a place 25 miles away. You got one in Georgia to get cheaper granite.
Well, you know what it came to. It really just gets thrown on a vein car and shipped out very cheap if I remember right.
The one issue she's having is she doesn't even have blocks mined yet. They don't even have to mine yet. So, they got to cut it out of the mine, bring it in and then their workshops are this big and the other places workshops are bigger than the arena.
That was everybody's first thought.
Yeah, so. Because they got one of them, we would consider it and I say, all the top of it. So, I'll let them get that tested. Bridge on Milpon Drive, counties met with me. They want our feeling on whether or not we feel that they can do that bridge project this fall.
Which one, Brett?
By the way.
The turn by Nick Lee's went down further.
Yeah, the one right there before the racetrack. They, they just, they, they wanted our feeling on it and your feeling on it, whether or not we thought it would interfere with our detour. And I, I don't think so.
No? How could it?
And I, I, I mean, it's not part of our detour. The only people that might use it is somebody trying to get around the detour.
Are there going to be any one-way traffic both they're working on or is it a toll chain that doesn't? Because the bridge is being moved on.
It's accounting with the town.
It's accounting.
How long is the closure for?
He's, he's going to get all the details, but he wanted to know, it sounded like it's going to be like a two-to-three-month job at the least.
But it's going to change the route for the fire trucks. That's, that's kind of.
Well, he, he's going to be in touch with everybody with that. He just wanted to know if we, because he said he doesn't believe he could get it in place to do it in July and August while I were shut down. But I told him, I don't think that would affect our detour anyways. Our detours basically.
Well, if you've got your detour and people are going to have their own detour.
Yeah, but they won't be able to go that way. And the fire trucks are going to be the big. So, you're going to have to go around to get to, up to town and they're not going to be able to cut that. It's like a 70- or 80-foot bridge wider and they're straightening it. They're moving it over.
So, what, what, do you think that's going to happen, Rick?
He said if everything went to plan, he would say August, September, October. He's not sure of that. It could be September, October, November. But he's, he's, right now, they're, they're hoping to beat a bid and do it this fall. But he just, he wanted me to let everybody know. It's just, because he said if we are totally dead set against it at the same time as our detour. But I said our detour is for three years, so what are you going to wait three years?
Well, actually, maybe stage a fire truck on the other side, respond and walk across the bridge. You know, one of the bumpers is like. So, we'll, we'll talk more about it. I appreciate that, so.
But I, I'll have more information on it once I tell you.
They just, just have to make sure that people coming using Westville Road Detour for our project know that they can't make right and turn their, go anywhere.
We're going to have a lot of happy people between Serenac Avenue, next to Whiteface.
And then the sidewalk closure on Main Street. The only reason I brought them on to bring that up was they want to close that down basically for this summer. And we've always maintained that that wasn't ours. How will we? I just wanted to get this clarified is, but once we put the new sidewalk in, is that how we're going to still handle this?
I think Ivan's information would be useful here, but I, my understanding of Main Street is you measure 25 feet to the center of the road and that's public. So, the portion of the sidewalk that's within 25 feet is a public walk.
Okay.
Even though I understand years ago, the hotel owners may be paid for the gravestones that went, that went down on that side.
Has Ivan had it dispatched to replace those with granite?
You know. Yeah, their whole sidewalk, that's the only reason I'm bringing this up because they always maintained it was there, so we let them maintain it is there. We've never replaced bricks in that section or, but this comes down to it. My understanding and what we have found during this project is anything 25 cent, you know, feet of center line, each side, it's all under us. So, you can say you own it all you want, it's ours. So, I just, with this here, I just wanted to make sure that we're not, we're staying consistent. If we're going to say it's ours, then it's ours.
If, if need be, a couple of us that met the principals of the company who owns that property now, I think Peter Hyden was very right. He's, he's, he's a key person there. And if we needed to clarify that, we could. He's, he's really very community-oriented in terms of what, what goes on. And basically, let's basically, they're putting a whole new side on that building, so public safety is going to take that here.
Doesn't it look like it's hard to keep the cars?
No, no, no.
They have the signage.
Backed by Bosse's.
Backed by Bosse's.
Yeah, parking them back.
That's why I want to bring this up, this Richard talking, I mean, he's not happy. He wants their crosswalk to be over by, you know, where the property line is.
Probably right by the Jangle.
The Jangle. Granite Bosse's there, but you got the loading zone on the other side.
What's going to happen when we're digging up the road surface? Those crosswalks as they're marked now are going to be gone, disappearing. Are they going to be putting like temporary?
They, they will, they will have to do something to temporarily mark that. D O T is going to maintain some type of marking for the crosswalks to keep it as, maybe signage. And in that, in that detour plan, there might be signage for.
I thought I read something.
I think, I think it might happen in the detour plan that they have to have signage over the crosswalks.
So, anyway, Rupert asked me to ask you if you could talk to G O C if you could get the new, just temporary crosswalk put in near the bagel shop.
Yeah, we can, we can ask them about, but there is, there's no curb drop there, is there? No curb drop, is there? So, there, there, to be a legal crosswalk, you're going to need a curb drop.
Plus, it's into the loading zone.
Sort of the same issue we had with Northwood School there.
There is one up further.
We painted that one.
But they need to go across in the back.
They could do that here. We painted a slight ramp on it for the parking area so you could, you know, throw it on wheelchair.
Yeah.
You could do that. We could probably do that. And then we use temporary tape, reflective tape. So, my feeling is I have no problem with their closure, but we probably should clarify the crosswalk.
He doesn't want his part closed.
I, I, yeah.
It does make it signable. So.
The only other option.
Because there's the loading zone on the other side.
They could also have closer to Gil Joseph's maybe, so it couldn't be maybe not.
The only other option that we have is what we've made other people do and that's power pedestrians lock around, but you don't have any parking on us to do that.
Well, and we got, we don't know what we're instruction, we're just going to leave that in. So, I mean, the Northwood thing worked pretty well. And we stayed completely with what was in the work. So, the question clearly, where we're going to be working ourselves, whether that would be an option.
Yeah, so I will talk with D O T about putting a temporary crosswalk in. And that would limit how much sidewalks closed. But when this is all over with, we probably should let everybody know, at least at the Northwood Building, that 25-foot from center line is ours.
Yeah.
Or the D O T.
That's, that's what, everything Ivan has done on Main Street, has worked on that with that.
Yeah, that's, that's the same thing. We're going to have it. Because we have that same argument up at the, what's it, that?
Yeah.
Yeah. That outlet there. That's within that right away also.
Do we, do we sweep their sidewalk?
Well, we sweep when we go through with the sweeper like we do there because I got Northwood. But we don't maintain anything. That's things.
I think, my, my opinion is given, given what we understand is public right of way, that we probably would not have. We probably should be maintaining.
And probably correct.
The one in front of Bosse's, that was, that's, was in awful shape.
Is it?
Yes. So, they're not maintaining it anywhere?
He does, he does every couple of years. He goes and puts piles of bricks in. Right.
The, the area between Bosse's and the big parking lot, is there any plans at all for a park or sidewalk to go, continue through there? Yeah. I didn't, I hadn't paid attention to that. That's always an area that just gets.
No.
That's why I can't respond if people walk.
Yeah, there will be, it's going to.
Snowbanks and puddles. You're kind of battling between taking that parking lot and loading it down.
No, it's, it's, there's a park, there's a park or a walkway through there now. Good.
Did you tackle a while then?
What?
Did you tackle a while then?
No, I went home to feed my dog at lunch and went around the side of the house. It was, I saw my roof. I decided to knock an icicle down and when I turned around, the mice came off. So, I had to go get four staples after I didn't watch.
I didn't know if anyone had, so I'm like, I'm just going to get that out there.
I went to that emergency room when I told Craig. You couldn't go through McDonald's as fast as they got a hand in it.
Oh, really?
I swear, it was like 15 minutes. They said, I didn't even, they asked if I wanted no cane or not. I said, I don't really.
Just want a staple.
So, they didn't want, cleaned it up and sent me out to go. I couldn't believe how fast.
I got to get one from Mindy related to Main Street. Mindy?
Yeah.
Street poles, new street poles. Kimball estimates is about 35 of them, about $100,000 for the poles and the arms. Now, including the fixtures, which would be I E P. Can we include those in the bond, the 0% bond?
I don't see why not. It's, it's an improvement to Main Street, so yeah, that should be acceptable.
Okay, that's, so that's the plan to put the $100,000 or whatever it is into the 0% bond.
Okay.
Anything else, Brett?
No.
Okay, then we'll move on to Mindy. Mindy's got a couple of changes coming up that she needs to advise you of and just give us a little direction.
Yes, Sharon came up and saw me. We knew this day was going to come sooner than later, but she has not put in her formal letter yet. But she has an appointment with Social Security on the 16th or 15th or 16th of April, at which time she'll have her, she's already gone, but it's been so long since she went that they're going to make her do it again. So, two weeks from that date will be her last day of employment. She's going to retire, so.
During May 1st.
Yes. She has stated that, because she hasn't sold her big house yet, that she will come back and help us once we hire another person, if we need additional training. Megan is great, but somebody needs to learn how to do Kathy's job now. Because I don't see it long before Kathy gives me her notice as well. She's been talking about it a lot lately, so I'd like to get somebody trained for her position. So, essentially, I just like the okay to put it in the paper.
So, we post the position.
Goodbye, me. These days. Been lucky to have the girls this long.
I know.
You have to approve that they can leave, right?
Yeah. I, I tried that on Sharon. She didn't like that.
Well, she's certainly been a long-time dedicated person and what we're losing is her knowledge of the individual customer base that they serve, which is, which is big.
I will say she did an excellent job training Megan. It was hard during COVID because the office was closed so much, but her, her knowledge base, I still use her for information because she's been around so long that she just, she knows so much about the electric billing and she's amazing at what she does. And she will be greatly, greatly, greatly missed. But now I have to get all that knowledge base that Sharon gave to Megan and find somebody new that Kathy can now give that information to that's in her head, which is a lot of information, some of which I don't even, I still don't know how to do myself. I have to make phone calls when Kathy's out and say, how do you do this? So, the sooner I can get somebody in and, and train, the better off we'll be.
Maybe we can make them both carry village cell phones when they leave.
I have both their cell numbers currently. I think they'd answer if, if we called. Sharon certainly would as long as she's in someplace sunny and not here.
So, I have an unrelated conversation, but if I may be under you. Eileen contacted me or, in the conversation with Eileen, she got a mailing that they're switching the life insurance from one company to another and she wanted, she asked me if I could verify that because it's asking for the people it's going to go to. And it's through the village.
The last I knew, it was still through Guardian. I haven't gotten any notification on it, but I'll check with Tracy and find out if she has. Generally speaking.
It's still, still the same insurance company, but they're updating it to make sure that the beneficiaries and everything are still all.
Okay, because she, she, when we talked, it was like Guardian, but it was another company that she had mentioned. So, maybe she, I don't know if she misread the paper or whatnot. So, I said, I have a workshop meeting, I'll bring it up to you then. So.
I can mail it to you before you tell all of them from Guardian, just reveal all your information.
Okay.
The only thing to fill out is if there was a change, right?
I think so, yeah. Or I think they're more than, just look your head up. Okay.
And actually, it's a good thing for insurers to do periodically because we all go through these things.
Things change and you forget.
Yeah. Too many, nothing, too much. Anything else, Mindy?
Yeah, one quick thing, just as the meeting was starting, I just, just got a call from Brenda, the branch manager down at the N B T Main Street office. And they are going to be closing their office and working out of Serenac Lake due to some staffing issues for 10 days. So, Billy, if you could just let Jason know if we're emptying meters, he can bring, I mean, we don't really have any cash per se, stuff to the outpost. But as far as coin, if he's going to do like a full, whole, Brenda gave me her cell number and they will have somebody there, so at least we can put it in the vault.
Okay, so we're still going to, we'll just have to notify them before we go then?
Yeah, yeah. And try and do it all in one day. That way, they only have to have one person there. I guess Serenac Lake office is really short-staffed. That's all I have.
Okay. We'll move on to Kimball. And then Kimball had just one basic and I, and I think I said it all out, but it's been ongoing discussion. I've got some pictures here if anybody's interested, the trees are pretty good-sized trees.
To clarify, the big pine tree by Ironman Rock is gone. That one was, I didn't think needed any debate on. It's more the one up by the toboggan slide that, it does have some green needles on it, so you can't put it back up if we cut it, so.
What would Tim check say?
Don't cut it. Well, I, as a precaution, I did, we did, I did push this on to the Beach Park Appearance Committee that's been working on a plan over there. Dean responded quite likely response, but it appears that Jamie and the tree committee had also, had already requested removal of these trees. So, I think everybody that needs to be in the know before we take it down and somebody's wondering what happened to the trees.
We're talking about these three?
Well, we're talking certainly about this big one on this one side. Kimball, are, is one on the other side, which looks to be almost is dead.
Um, this is up by the toboggan slide?
Yes, yes. What I'm holding here is the toboggan. I think this is the big one on the church side that, that looks like it's probably 90% no needles. But there's a couple on the other side that more, on the beach house side of it. Are we taking all three of those or just the one big one?
Just the one big one. It's pretty much the one in the picture that's right between, it's kind of between the two pillars, but more towards the left pillar.
Right, okay. That's, that's the one I, that's the one I, that's my point of view like down here. It looks like it's probably pretty much served its useful life.
Is there going to be a stump? Are you going to dig up the roots a little bit and landscape it a little bit?
I was just going to cut it low, but we could get someone to grind the stone, certainly.
I figure we might as, might as well do it right. Yeah. Or you can leave it and then people are going to, if you want, it's just going to have to resplat. Hold on, so. It's probably worth providing. I need to see it.
Are either of the trees safety hazard? I mean, those are pretty big limbs right next to a toboggan chute. The tops could fall off or are they not that bad? I mean, that'd be a good reason to get rid of them. I'm guessing guys all said take them out.
Look at, if we're taking one down, if the other two is on in my lifetime.
I'm sorry the pitcher doesn't do it justice, but it, as you look at the pitcher, the right side's pretty much dead. The left side has some life still in it, not much, but.
What was the condition of the other two? Like.
More better than that one. More better than that one. I would say the other two have at least ten years of life in them.
And they're also not quite so heavy. This one looks like the top is.
I just wanted to get it removed in the wintertime to prevent the damage there that, for less, to limit the amount of damage.
It's a good time to do it if you had, if your crews aren't busy with other things, so, uh, it's probably a good time to get it out of there. You coordinate that with which anyway, I'm guessing?
Yes.
Okay, Bill, police reform and reinvention, that project is moving along and we're, I believe we're about ready to go out for, uh, with the draft with the public community to, uh, respond to.
Yeah, so I sent everyone the, if anyone didn't get it, let me know. I sent everyone the copy of the draft, uh, yesterday. And so it should be, if anybody doesn't have it, let me know and I'll resend it to them. But, uh, we basically went over the draft that she did the first time, myself, Assistant Chief Thompson, the mayor. There were some grammatical corrections and some small minor corrections in there, but this is our, our police reform draft plan. Um, it has to go out for ten days for the public to comment on, and then approved or just, you know, approved by the board and then it gets electronically sent to the state for, for their approval. So, uh, it's, it's, uh, I wouldn't say it's generic. It, it meets the needs of our community. In my opinion, and, uh, I think it's a pretty good plan, so we should be all set.
Any, uh, any public commentary or come back with the draft to the board and?
Yeah, so that changes or any wish.
Any further requirements that are needed to, we have, we have, we actually have to have it submitted for April first.
Right.
And that finishes that.
So are we going to have a meeting then beforehand to approve that?
Well, at this point, because ten days takes us beyond the fifteenth month, uh, which is our next board meeting, so I, I will ask at the next, Monday's meeting, I'll ask for a special board meeting for March twenty ninth, which will be cool. And that gives us a little bit of time.
Transcribe the morning meeting. On the agenda.
Actually, actually, there will be, there will be an agenda items, but I believe it's a special meeting. We have to stipulate ahead of time what those items might be on the, so anything we can address before the, uh, before this change of leadership on the board, uh, we'll try to.
So mayor, you'll have, uh, do you put that out on the village website?
Yes, okay, thank you. It'll be, uh, I, 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 I think both the chief and I are very interested in what the community comments may be. Um, you know, we did a, we did one, uh, public commentary. Again, I think, I think the virtual meeting issue, COVID problem, nobody, nobody really contributed much to it. Which, which I think is interesting because, and it demonstrates the difference in communities because the next door community in Serenac Lake, there certainly has been plenty of commentary, and the paper's been full of it. But, uh, I, I, I wouldn't say that it was derogatory. I think their community seems to be receptive to the program that they're proposing, which actually puts a mental health person almost that's in the place department. I don't know whether that's going to work or not, but it's a collaboration with Franklin County and Citizens Advocates, who I guess is actually gonna fund or pick for that person.
Bill, the only thing I would change to the Black Lives Matter thing, I think the way you've written this like implies that you were expected by once. That's why I read it at least. People are sensitive to that stuff.
Well, we have some interesting news, uh, here that may be a little different in some communities, but the, you know, the community, our legacy has been dealing with, uh, sporting events that have brought, uh, amongst others, the international Olympics, you know, the White Plastic, bringing up the, uh, World Warrior University Games. All these organizations have standards, and actually they're responding in some ways to the very same thing that, uh, that this is being proven to, uh, expand, but I think, I think our, our view, and I know we, we've discussed it quite a bit with, uh, as this was being developed, but, you know, we're in the Olympic community and, and there's certain standards that we adhere, we adhere to when, when we were hosting the Olympics, and I, I think those are just more or less a place. And I think, you know, we, we have certainly have diversified, uh, diversified groups that come in here with those events, and, and generally speaking, somewhere, we'll see it through the World Warrior University Games, you know, the community will, will, will have to demonstrate that it respects those, uh, those conditions. So it is interesting to me that there hasn't been a lot of, uh, community focus here as there isn't some communities. But it appears to be going along, and, and I guess maybe the, the underlying good thing for the department chief is the fact that, uh, you know, our operating policies and procedures probably had a pretty exhaustive review.
Yeah.
During this process, the prior to, when Scott was shooting, you're operating on policies from the fifties and sixties at times. And, you know, it, it certainly doesn't hurt the community to know that there's, the department operates under specific standards that are set for it, and that, uh, you know, there are prohibitions now against some of the things that make the world become more of a sovereign. So, so we're, we're moving on to that. Anything else, Bill?
No, I don't have any.
I'm moving on to other matters. Uh, the, the other item that the state had required was the development of the Public Employer Health Mercy Plan, which, which really came out of the pandemic. And, uh, that has been completed by the, with the consultancy segments. It is on the town's agenda for, for the town board to approve it. We would most likely approve it, uh, at Monday's board meeting, and again, it's gotta be delivered by April first, so we're in good shape on that. Just speaking.
Can we see it, Craig? Pardon? Can we see it?
Um, I thought Anita had put it out, but I'll, uh, I wonder if, 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 she's been heavily focused on the election, so, uh, if, if in fact, we don't feel that we're ready on Monday to begin with. It's, it's interesting when you read the plan. I have read it a couple of times. It, uh, it sort of takes everything that we had to do during the COVID period dating all the way back to March and the events that came along when we were operating. So, you know, in fact, when, when I read it, I got the feeling that we've already been there and, and we've sort of learned and experienced, but it happens, uh, the procedure as to how essential workers are, are we addressed during those types of situations. Hopefully, we never have any of those situations. This is fuzzy. So I'll, I'll, I'll check and I'm, uh, whether or not. The other thing we have is a question of the White Plastic beautification program for their, their, uh, and I made, I made a few copies of this. This, this basically is a report, and of course, it's, it's asking for and appreciating our support. Just as a reminder, and I'd like to provide for twenty-eight thousand dollars, which we provided them for the cost that you see the chief just handed out. I think what this sheet is reporting to show us is that actually the work we're doing, or they're doing, they've listed all of the main street, or I'm sorry, the village patients that they, that they take care of, funeral gardens or planters or hanging pots. And, and Sharice has attempted to give you a breakdown of the costs that the organization finds, so as you're looking at this, their investment into the village beautification part of the program is thirty-five thousand dollars. I would say that the second item, booster park at number one Main Street, is not going to be done this year. That park will be logged and construction, starting in spring instead of winter. That, that's two thousand dollars they won't have to expend, and I, I met with Sharice and Brad this, just this week and went over that. The others, we're going, they're gonna try as much as possible to maintain flowers along Main Street during the summer. I think the sense was that they were gonna be able, the parks that we're gonna be able to access and maintain them. You know, throughout the construction, so that July and August, we won't look like we're not going in. But take a look at the list on the left-hand side. It's giving you all the different locations that they, uh, that they have been, uh, taking care of under, under the village portion of the budget. They also get some money from the town for some of the town work, of course. A lot of the private businesses pay for, uh, additional payments.
Craig, I think you and I talked about that she really shouldn't be applying for leaf grant. Or, well, you can't use leaf for yearly maintenance, but when she's asking for pots and things like that.
Oh, I agree.
That's right in that, you know, what it's there for.
Unfortunately, leaf didn't exist when we were updating the pots at the moment. They're pretty much up to date.
Okay, I just saw here, what is it? Did I see it for five thousand stuff? Yeah, but I'll, I'll, I'll call her and I'll talk to her.
Yeah, um, maybe, uh, yeah, I think, I think we pretty much have, have resupplied their, we certainly had the hanging, uh, hanging pots in brackets because those belong to the village at the end of the day. The big planter pots, I think we paid for some of them a couple of years ago. Others that are being used by the private businesses, I think shouldn't be a village expense, but, uh, anyway, we, we, we've tried to accommodate their requests. Sometimes we can give up the twenty-eight thousand base for product and labor, but product cost has gone up and labor cost has gone up. Twenty-eight thousand allocations been on the books. That's what we currently have in the budget for right now. I think she's gonna have to work with a new board to see whether they want something different or can do, can do more for the program. But I wanted to be all to be aware of those discussions. I will say that in addition to that, the village also does assist them with the maintenance of their vehicles. They're currently looking for another pickup truck one. There's a shot. But, uh, and, and oftentimes we have something in the village we can, uh, we can kind of add on to, but she pointed out that they really like small pickups that they can maneuver around the street. Bigger trucks don't work as well for them. So Connie was always good around those.
Now, once again, that might be something for leaf.
Could be. That might be something we could leave, but it might allow to get something. The other thing I wondered about is whether, uh, and again, maneuverability on the main street is uh, sometimes is whether there isn't some other type of, uh, that would carry a watering tank that might not take up as much, uh, weight or data. Something like that, I don't know, but, um, I will tell you that Sharice speaks, speaks very highly of Kimball's organization and Brad's organization in terms of, you know, how good she gets and supports, and, and she says, not only just when, when she asked for it, she said that employees, if they see them trying to muscle up, enter to the place or on the backside of the lake, they're going by, they'll stop and help out. So I, it, it certainly doesn't hurt, uh, to let folks know that there's appreciation for services you don't necessarily see written in cost. So.
Craig, also just to know, we insure all their vehicles.
Yeah, we do, um, and I believe we probably register them.
No, they're all registered under beautification. We just, I, I don't know if they turn the registration over to us cuz we copied all of that when we did the, the vehicle project, but we do pay to insure them. They're on our policy.
So I, I would say overall, it's probably, we probably budget another three thousand dollars a year for mostly the equipment related stuff. Some years they use it, some years they don't. I'm not sure who pays for their fuel. But they have an independent, like beyond the village, very much like, uh, our volunteer fire department, because they have, they have other assets that are outside of the village fire, even itself. So more to come on that. And then, uh, I think the most important thing, and I sent this all through you electronically yesterday, we have a letter that was received from the voluntary ambulance service. It was addressed to me. The town received a similar letter. It's playing out a situation that has that has created, you may recall a year or so ago, the county entered into a program to help communities that were underserved with ENS services. And this grant funding for, I think, a couple of years that supported that. So the county went and did. I know the town Wilmington got assistance under this program. North Elva did not because our program here was, uh, was operating reasonably well, and we were staffing and they were able to maintain themselves. So the county did it on a selective basis. What's happened is now the county pays higher wages and we're losing some of our EMT people.
Already lost two.
We've lost two. When they're talking three full-time, we're lost, and several of the ENS staffs are no longer coming here. They're leaving, they're leaving our service with, uh, staff and jobs.
And they're using our money to pay for it.
Yeah, um, this letter went to, uh, went to me, it went to supervisor, a copy of it's going to Essex County. So the county is informed. The last paragraph in the letter really is asking, disposes questions. Uh, and what happens if the grant funding doesn't come through and don't, do the taxpayers of the, of the entirety of Essex County get, get tagged with that cost? Uh, and if so, uh, I think the last sentence is most important. Might we propose the tax dollars be distributed to the services throughout Essex County? This may very well address the inadequate level of providers in certain areas of our county, which is really what they're expressing concern. I spoke with the supervisor and suggested that we certainly would wanna meet with the county. And we will meet, Patty Bayshaw is meeting with the volunteer ambulance people from the county this evening, and, uh, based on that, Jay and I will, will recommend further steps, but just to make you aware that, uh, this is a valuable service. I don't know, Bill, how much you heard about it, but it's apparently the unversion of the organization.
How about what Larry does?
Unintended consequence to the county trying to help other rural areas that the county didn't.
So, for, this is the first time I heard of it, so it's being funded initially by grants?
The program that the county entered into, uh, a year or two ago, yes, it's funded by grants.
Okay.
So, and that was going to be available for a period of time. It was a pilot program.
Okay.
That the state approved for the county.
Okay.
And, uh, I know the town Wilmington, Randy Preston used to talk about this. Randy was one of the drivers that worked on it. Wilmington's done a bit strong, I know for sure, and, uh, um, I don't think it was intentional on the part of the county that this was gonna happen, but you know, I remember back when we, uh, when we merged the administration of our public transport, Classic Express, one of the reasons the drivers, didn't have any objection to it was because the county hourly rate for carly bar, this was higher, and they got benefits that we did not provide.
Your color address.
So they got, they got access to things. So they got they got access to things that that were not available. Through the village at that time. So, you know, these things happen. But there'll be more on this. I'll certainly keep you informed of developments. Expect I'll hear more tomorrow. We both, both Jay and I have a have a have a good relationship with Larry Brockway. He really, he really puts a ton of effort into the the work he does for the volunteers.
I'm interested to know, does anyone know off the top of their head, what say the county budget, what is? What's the percentage of the county budget that's funded by tax revenue from the village or North Elva?
Seventy, I heard. Is that correct, Craig?
Sales tax, about seventy seventy two fifty five percent.
Oh, the sales tax revenue?
Yeah. I'm not all that up to date on the county budget itself. I tend to look at the stuff that the town looks at. But that's a good question.
Shouldn't you? I would think that, oh, we we. We're happy to help, but we should participate in some of the things that are being funded.
In all in all fairness, I don't say that the leadership of the county board, one of the problems that go out to the Sean Gilland has been particularly. Responsive and certainly back in the beginning of the COVID stuff, he was front and center and. Was communicating very effectively with the townships, including North Elva. So my my sense would be that they will. Again, I think the thought that I have here is that Jay and I would would want this to be addressed at the county scene.
Well, we are represented there. I mean, we all live in the town as well as the village and half the salary that Jay gets is to represent the county, so.
But I also, I'm also aware of the fact that this is such a vital service. Certainly was driven home very quickly to me about three weeks ago, so. And and how efficient and comforting it is to have that service here. If you didn't have it. I know Sunday afternoon, I have to be over at Whiteface and driving back, I see our ambulance box parked at the along the Still Waters. And they're just sitting there and I'm wondering what's going on. It turns out that Wilmington had one of their ambulances over in Serenac Lake. So Lake Classic, they have a mutual aid program in between themselves. So Lake Classic was. Station halfway halfway between the two communities, so they're going to life. But. So we, you know, we we our our volunteers certainly. Work with surrounding communities services. Other than that, a little bit of good news in the paper today regarding the stimulus bill that includes millions for local counties. And also gives a list of Essex County, Essex County got. Seven point fifteen million dollars, four million going to the towns. Then they rolled the towns down. North Elva is is indicated as eight hundred eighty thousand, which I had seen yesterday with something Chuck Schumer put out. What isn't in there, and and the article was accurate, says this data does not include money intended for villages. Because the process has not been put in place to, quote, divvy up the funds between overlapping governments. The Department of Treasury will decide how this will be implemented. What I was hearing yesterday in a Zoom meeting that I sat through. Environmental committee, this came up, some of the other mayors that were on it. And what Schumer was suggesting, and this is Schumer's recommendation, may or may not apply, was that they they take the population of each village. And divide that into the total population of each township and the village will get that portion that its population represents. So. It's kind of a simple, not a way of approaching that. We'll see what happens. That would mean, I would guess, if we make sense. We'd see about twenty five or so percent of the eight hundred eighty thousand. We'll see.
Who would be writing us that check?
Where's it go to? We'll see.
Better about this.
Well, I'm just saying. I did read articles that suggest.
It's lucky it doesn't exist.
I mean, you know, some people feel that villages were not. Our village budget, certainly, you know, the items that we're trying to, where we where we suffered a little bit, like every other community in New York State is. Certain monies that were, you know, were expecting to see such as Aang money or Chips money. I don't know about the snow money for that snow remover for the pieces of road out here, but. State obviously is very slow on getting those monies to us. So when you look as opposed to, you look at a, you look at us right now, they're. Probably elements of the budget that have not seen yet. So we have those those factors. I what I think we're all very interested in in watching is what kind of a plan is going to be put in place for utility services? That we so far are suspended. There's no terminations. It probably won't be until next September. Where people have not had to pay for. It is, I know M U A is working on on the electric side of it. They're trying to come up with a plan without members. Or Sue or I would think would follow a similar thing. Relivies are probably permissible, however. I don't think we're going to be allowed to assess any penalty fees. So there's a whole range of discussions going on on this stuff. I think the good news, the encouraging news is at least they're suggesting that maybe it will be an M inside. Maybe September before it would be. But Mindy, Mindy's on top of most of this activity. She sees the same same information and. Mayor's office gets, and I can't visit, but keeping. Keeping myself committed on this stuff, but hopefully, hopefully we'll get some guidance. In the meantime. Maybe he stepped off because she had to do something. Have to go get it now. Yeah, but I believe. You know, we did, we did put out letters offering people that are getting behind the opportunity for payment plans. I think those payment plans are going to be part of the. Final recommendation that comes out of the. Comes out of the state ultimately.
Kathleen, a meeting on the twelfth. You're comfortable that they're, they have all the information correct?
Twenty thirty.
Is it the twelfth, the meeting at the Olympic Center?
Oh, you mean the, well, on the twelfth is just the dry run.
That's that's a dry run. It's a dry match.
Eighteenth is the information.
I cannot be here on the twelfth, so I've indicated that to whoever sent that email. I'll use Dean. Yeah, that, you know, my my role is pretty minimal. It's the welcome in the beginning. I'll I'll work that out in some way. So you and I are going to answer the questions.
Yes. On the eighteenth, Ivan and I are going to answer the question.
Are you going to do most of the talking? Because the last time you did a public conversation, it didn't go over so well.
No, it's, this is just basically people will either will send in questions. We want to answer the questions. It's. I don't, I don't imagine. There's going to be a huge amount of questions asked at this one. I've maybe.
We are, and I know we're, it's working on it. I do have a version of. It's color coded by the time of year. Certain work is going to be done. For example, the blue that you see is spring of twenty one. There's some green that is associated with off the main street projects that the contractor. Would like to be able to work on during July and August. I don't think we're ready to offer them that opportunity. But before we do, there'll be certainly a discussion with the full focus group. They work on this so that the information can get out really correctly. Take a sense of everybody.
You you sent it electronically. Does it come out in color?
Please. No, when it first got, apparently. I'll I'll remember and I'll look it up and reissue it. But anybody's wants this this set, this set sits on the table in the office. We're all well. It it covers the entire scope of the footprint. The things that they're specifically asking for. Maybe be allowed to do a lower volume work in July and August for the number one main street park, which literally is going to be torn up. In the spring. The the thought there is that most of that will be handwork and small equipment, could be a large equipment that would affect traffic flow or parking up there. So I think I think Brad is trying to get the contractors, you know, time periods for how long each one of these sites might.
What I usually talk to Craig about was, instead of them just saying, we want to work in this parking lot in July and August, we want to work in this parking lot in July and August. Want them to break down. How long they think each thing's going to take? So we can, like, if it's N B T lock, it sounds like July and August, no way, but maybe it's three days. Maybe it's only three days they need in the parking lot. I don't. So Mike said they were going to work on that. Giving us timeframes for what each piece actually will will take. Instead of just saying, this is where we want to work, July and August. He also, I talked to Craig a little bit about this. This is just came up recently. This was yesterday. They said, would nightingale be considered in those areas?
July and August?
Just in the main parking lot, big parking lot.
Okay.
Just to ju, just to dig the pipe corrupts it. Because they said we could do it pretty quick. There was nothing there that, no.
Yeah, that makes sense.
They said, they said, if we came in and we worked when nobody was parked there and we weren't affecting anybody, would you allow us to do it? I said, I'd ask. But they're still working on getting all that together. They just really want to get out of here, happen here.
Let's not make these decisions here until we have those bad information because the community deserves to hear it correctly.
I think one thing is obvious, who wants to see it torn up? Might as well keep it working.
I think I think it'd be better for people in the village to see that we're continuing to put it back. Even though.
They were also saying to me, they would, whatever we decide, they're they're fine with, but they will, they they would work different hours if we. Requested it, they wouldn't work Fridays in the park. Just, you know, anything they could do to accommodate what. July and August. But the park, like you said, if you go into the spring, they tear it all up and they don't put it back. It's just going to sit there all summer, torn up.
So when we have, when we can present it correctly with with their information. I mean, this only came up at the meeting of the, come with the contractors. We were participated in. So. Hearing some of this is. But those areas are all coded here. So like I said, during, this this is in the mayor's office. You're welcome to come in and look at it anytime you want.
As exciting as that sounds.
I'll 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 locate it and reissue it so that you all have it again. Actually, they've done a nice job of coding everything by when they expect to do the work and.
They actually, they'd even be O T. And then on how great of a presentation it came. I mean, hard to get that as a D O T.
Like, like I said, it's like if I went to a SWAT meeting before they broke into a place, they've really done their work. They're ready to go. Really are.
He's hoping.
Well, but I mean, I think it's not normal. I mean, these guys really want to get in, get out. Luckily, we both have the same agenda. We both want them in and out quickly.
That's what happens when you come in four million less.
Yeah, right.
Well. That's basically what I have at the moment that if we're, is there any other, I mean, we've got some time left here. The town board has a meeting in six, but we've still got. Anything else wants to put on the table?
It's about this D E C permit. When I get the. This thing, Dr. Brown, I really would like to please a couple of people here with me. Just to listen to that.
Talking on the. Twenty third.
March twenty third.
It's twenty third at nine A M. Okay. And then I possibly could have, if people can't get here, I might be able to make it so. It's a webex meeting. With a D E C over this D E C permit at the wastewater plant.
Is it a public meeting?
It. Doesn't sound like it's a public meeting. It sounded like they wanted to meet with just a couple of us, but.
So we're limited to us.
But we have a webex meeting. Like, I have an hour day, I could spend a lot more time on video and film.
Yeah.
I usually, if it's, if there's a webex link, in my experience, because I've I've come across in other state stuff. Most of our computers, you have the link and you're able to get it.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'll make sure we can get is more people, just so that everybody can hear it from them. Exactly what this entails. Because there is going to be a bunch of costs. That's how you should be. They love to do that at most places.
Surely they would fund it. It's a tough time for them to roll this stuff out with every municipality in the state struggling to. That's what I don't. I don't, I don't quite quite understand what they could.
Good news, everybody, we can stand both of them. We will get together and. Cost wise.
Well, I do know that it probably would have been here before now, but like I said, there was. A lot of these places were very happy with this. I think the mayor and I, I had a meeting with Robie. When he was supervisor about this because there was a lot of. Like I said, there were a lot of municipalities that were doing upgrades at the time this stuff started popping out. And everybody was so angry that if you knew this was coming, you approve our plans. You know how the Department of Health, the D E C approves everything? You approve our plans, we start building, we're almost finished, and now all of a sudden there's an upgrade that needs to come out? They they blamed it on E P A with some of it, you know, like protection agents, he popped this on them, but.
It's not bad. We're not water saving an organization here anymore.
We, we've been in contact with them and all all they keep telling us is they're close to getting it approved. They're just backed up. And Steve's Department of Health, we got. The person that had our plans left.
Did they have our plans?
No, they were sitting on our desk. They just didn't get.
Well, they actually did, they were sitting on the desk for months.
Yeah, you guys politically pushed that on. The person that took some political steps to.
And it brought it back up to the top of the file, so it's kind of bad. Notice here that that. Person's gone. It looks close though now. It looks really close and we're. Anything else that we can? Just buy them for? If not, we'll. Close out this meeting and take this off the recording.
Peter, you want that back to you?
This one here, I'll throw in the boxes upstairs after I talk with them about. Because this is part of the grade. But.